Does anybody have anything to address?
We announced the votes and the people are here now that we're here this afternoon. Basically, a synopsis of what we decided what we did. Pretty much all we have to add.
Well, I'll suggest also that since we have finished up by 7:00 and I paid for 24 hours, so I've got plenty of time on my hands. Then we also have Commissioner comments. That we also have Commissioner comments, given this. If any Commissioner has something to say, and I believe that takes a motion, that we do open up for Commissioner comments, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those that want to support having Commissioner comments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who wants to start? Commissioner Blile.
I voiced there a little bit earlier about the public participation coming after a review. And the information, some of the information that was given tonight would have been valuable with our work session this afternoon. And it's hard to put that together. It's also hard to have the work session before the public comments in light that the last meeting we had was about public participation. And in that meeting about public participation, we heard more than one person make the comment that nobody listens, and maybe that the comments that they make are of absolutely no consequence. And it was said with a lot of conviction. And that maybe there's no adequate notice to help people understand what's going on. There was a lot of frustration. And, you know, I can't help but feel that after what's happening today, that we just proved those people pretty much right on. And it does bother me. To sit the first time through all of these maps and spend all the time on it, and then to go through them this afternoon, I know we all voted pretty simply. It was pretty easy decisions to vote on what we perceived to be right, but I really feel inside that we didn't quite understand what we were doing. I know from the time that we spent on it the first time through, and just looking at the time that the council has spent on trying to understand what was going on, we may have been taken the easiest route possible, which was the easy way out, and not quite comprehending what the decisions we make really meant if we would have had better education and more time to look at this. And I think that that's not fair to the people of Wacom County. So I guess for some of those reasons, I have to apologize to the people of Wacom County and say that the job that I'm doing, I'm doing the best I can, but it's not a very good job.
Anyone else?
Just a short comment, because I've been through plenty of comments today, but one of the things that I've noticed is, after being on the Planning Commission for nearly eight years now, is that when you get your pack, and when you look at the materials, you form certain opinions. And you have certain preconceived notions sometimes that you bring into the context of the discussion, whatever it is, whether it's wind energy, or lammards, or shoreline protections, you have your own preconceived notions. However, when you have the opportunity to sit with a group of eight other people and deliberate and hear those types of opposing viewpoints, and you hear the opinions of the people at public hearings, you tend to get a different perspective. And it's always helpful. And even if you're hard-headed like myself, you can change your mind. The other factor that has unfortunately not been present in terms of this latest round of discussions and work sessions and public hearings is a time for reflection. And I know I'm not the only person on the Planning Commission that's articulated this, that you need time to think about, and time to reflect on what you see and hear and contemplate. And this particular procedure, because it's been a rush to judgment as a result of deadlines that were a result of, you know, not getting the job done, has really taken that element out for me, of being able to really reflect on some of these things, particularly on things that relate to agriculture, things that I don't know anything about, but things that I'm fortunate enough to know people who do know a lot about. And that whole aspect has unfortunately been missing. And I mentioned tonight, you know, before this thing started, or this afternoon, that this is headed for another forum. I'm sure it is, because it just looks very flawed on its face. So I'm not disappointed so much as I'm, you know, really hoping that some type of accord can be reached, but unfortunately, I think that's going to be in a court rather than a forum like this. And that's the way, that's the lay of the land tonight, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I'll make a comment. I think that a lot of work has gone into this draft, this plan. I commend the council for going through it parcel by parcel. I appreciate that some of the language was simplified, and that a lot of the ambiguous policies were deleted. And language was used from the Growth Management Act for consistency. And I commend the council's general desire to make lammard areas more inclusive and to reduce the pain of potential down zones as much as possible. I think that caring about Wacom County includes caring about people's life's work, and their property and their businesses. And I also think that Futurewise has a great product. And I think that they have diminished their great product by robo-e-mails saying that if you don't think exactly like they do, that you don't care about Wacom County. And those are my comments. Anyone else?
May I ask staff a question or two?
Yes.
I'd like you to address Mr. Stahlheim and Ms. Traxler's comments about inclusion of zoning into this hearing, and whether, why that was excluded, and...
Oh, I'm sorry. Karen Frakes from the Prosecutor's Office. The reason this has come back to the Planning Commission is because of a specific RCW in the Planning Enabling Act, I believe it's 3678-430, that indicates that comprehensive plan changes come back to the Planning Commission. My reading of the Planning Enabling Act, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm familiar with how official controls are handled, and zoning requirements are official controls. And the way that works is the way we're used to having our process go, where they go to the Planning Commission initially, as they did in 2009. If the council makes changes to those official controls, the burden is on the council to have its own public hearing and address those changes. So there are two distinct processes for comprehensive plan amendments versus official controls.
Question then, so is the council's decision then dispositive, or does it have to go back to the Planning Commission?
On what?
If the council makes some changes, as they have, is the council's opinion basically settle the matter, except for the changes in the plan? In other words, could we listen to zoning change amendments or setback requirements, should council choose to task us with that function, with that task?
Well, I haven't really thought about that issue. That isn't what we have before you now. It's possible that if council chose to do that, maybe they could, but that isn't where we are at this point.
Well, obviously, you know, but...
I've got another question.
All right, then separately, I'd like to ask you about Ms. Traxler's assertion that governors, that the check-in-out area map should have been included. And I'm curious about whether or not it was not because there were no changes to it from the 2009. Is that the case?
That's the case.
I understand.
Commissioner Blile.
So, Gary, when it comes to egg setbacks, we had some in there, and they're out now, and we don't get to address that or anything. I mean, they're pretty important to what happens here, and...
Right, that's a zoning code issue. That's a specific development regulation that's separate from the comprehensive plan general policy that we've been talking about.
And because it's zoning, it's taken out of our review.
And it can be reviewed by the county council tomorrow night.
You know, I just want to point out that you did have it before you back in 2009, so it's taken out of your review to come back again, but it has gone through the process.
Yeah, but they basically take it out. That's the point. We had it, and we made a recommendation, then a recommendation disappears, and we have no recourse after that's taken out.
Well, they've changed your recommendation, and that's the council's prerogative.
They changed it from 50 feet to zero.
Well, that's the council's prerogative.
Any other questions? Any other clarifications? Do we have a motion?
I would like to address the Policy 2 GG-5 that Roger Almscar brought up. That was on page 11. In his recommendation, to minimize potential conflicts of rural residential development near designated natural resource lands to prevent adverse impacts on the resource land uses, and he suggested a period right there. I think that's a good idea, because I got confused in reading the rest of that, too, and wondering, well, are they talking about the resource lands, or are they talking about the rural element? And to me, it's a lot clearer if there is a period put in there. And I would like to so move that that change be made.
Can we do this? We had a vote on page 11, and we voted for it without any changes, so now what are we doing procedurally, so we don't get bollocked up here?
Well, as I mentioned in the announcement beforehand, there were some, the council went, or the Planning Commission went through it page by page, and took some preliminary votes, and then after the public hearing, would make the final decisions. So it's certainly open to discussion on any and all...
It's like straw votes that we were taking this afternoon.
That's what I was saying, sure.
So the big votes yet to come, on the whole pack.
Exactly. So there's all potential for discussion from now on, on any of these issues, and new votes, changing the straw votes that were made, preliminary votes, we called them.
Well, if that's a motion, I will second that.
Any discussion? Commissioner Blile.
So 2GG-5, is the purpose of this to ensure that farm and forest land do not get converted? Or is the purpose of this to ensure that farm and forest land do not inhibit the conversion? I mean, I don't understand what we're doing here. It looks to me like we're to minimize the potential conflicts of rural development to ensure that the conversion of farm and forest land stay there, and that they don't get impacted. So help me out here.
The way I read it is, it says minimize potential conflicts, et cetera, et cetera, and essentially says, and also minimize, and the conversion, so minimize the conversion of farm and forest land to non-resource uses.
And to take out that last sense would change this, a very, very, to a very large degree, would probably minimize its complete effect. So that is Roger stated, I think he stated, that you have the farm and forest land next to residential development, that even though it's not being used, it would impact it. Didn't you say something like that, Roger? What was the deal? What'd you say there? Come on, help us out. It was a long time ago.
I think my objection was that the last phrase about the conversion of land was the question, does that apply to land that's owned rural, or to land that's owned ag or forestry? That's the question. I don't think it's, it's not very clear.
And this policy is related to the designated natural resource land, which has its own comprehensive plan designation. And so that qualifies this policy. The conflicts are about designated resource lands, and perhaps that should be repeated. When it talks about the conversion of farm and forest lands to nonresource uses, they're talking about designated resource lands, which would not be rural lands.
So you have a way to fix this, so everybody's happy, Samia?
Well, if that's, and that's kind of the way I read it, too. Minimize conversion of farm and forest land, which would be in the designated resource lands. And we have, you know, Chapter 8 is our resource chapter, and policies on that would be in there. So this part of the sentence might be redundant.
Redundancy when it comes to preserving resource land is fairly important, considering how well we do preserve resource land.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yeah, I'd agree with John. This is a little, you know, you don't really see what it's trying to say, but, you know, we keep talking about trying to conserve our resource lands, and agricultural specifically, and it goes back, way back to the first paragraph in our rural thing about, and to reinforce during Wacom County 2000-31 visioning process, after numerous meetings, surveys, and everything. And I can speak directly for that, because I served on that committee. And I was surprised, at that time, how much the people of Wacom County, and especially Bellingham, wanted to conserve agriculture. But yet, and when we look at it, we want to conserve 100,000 acres, and we haven't got that in our resource designation, and a lot of the land is in the rural element. And I can speak from personal experience, because our farm is in Ferndale's urban growth area. And talking about buffers, if you don't think, when they come up to your fence line and develop, that it's not going to change how you do things, we've got good news for you. Because there's an awful lot of agriculture, and all the lot of land can produce agricultural products in rural areas.
So you're saying this is important no matter where it is, right?
Right. Because, you know, more and more, we see, you know, we talk about sustainable agriculture, sustainable projects, and we see more and more people wanting these five-acre tracts to develop, and, you know, preserve and sell at the farmer's market locally. But yet, at the same time, we turn around and say, you can't do this, can't do that. And then the neighbors move in, and they dictate.
And the right to farm thing that they signed, doesn't that help a lot?
You answer that, John.
I'm asking you. I know the answer.
Can we move back to proposed language changes on 2GG-5? Do you have any suggestions?
Samia, you got any help there for us? You gonna help us on this one?
If you're looking for more clarity?
Yes. More clarity and protection.
Well, it depends on if you're talking about the designated resource lands for the conversion, or the rural lands. It would be a much different approach.
Could we not add a 2GG-9 that speaks specifically to farm and forest land? Would that be helpful, or not? Now, it's already in Chapter 8, but we don't have Chapter 8 in front of us. We've got this one. But if it's worth reiterating in a separate line, so there isn't this conflict that Mr. Almscar was talking about, then why don't we just do it that way? What is inside a rural or a resource zone?
Mr. Davis?
As I understand it, well, like I said before, the way I read that is, this is essentially two sentences. One is to minimize potential conflicts, and one is to minimize conversion of farm and forest lands to nonresource uses. Does that sound right?
Yes.
So you're talking about separating those into two policies. And then the question becomes, is this, like Mr. Almscar says, there is some question, does this specifically refer to designated resource lands? Or since it exists in the goal 2GG under designated rural areas outside lammards, does this refer to farm and forest lands in those rural lands? And that is possibly something that could be clarified one way or the other, depending on what your preference would be.
What our preference would be, in what way?
Whether this policy, if you're talking about new policy, for example, Policy 2GG-9 to minimize the conversion of farm and forest land to nonresource uses, is that minimize the conversion of farm and forest land in the rural designation to nonresource uses, or conversion of farm and forest land in resource designation, agriculture designation to nonresource uses?
It's under the heading of variety of uses, while retaining traditional rural character, and most people think about rural characters being, you know, farm, and particularly in forest land as well.
Well, keep in mind the distinction between the areas of the county that are designated for resource uses, which is agriculture, forest, mineral, and then the portion of the county that's designated for everything else, everything that's not that and that's not rural. Everything else is, excuse me, not urban, not resource, everything else is rural. So I think this section right here, 2GG, is talking about those areas that are in the rural designation, that are not located within lammards. So is this, are we wanting to really clarify that this means to minimize the conversion of farm and forest land in this rural designation?
Yes.
To nonresource uses?
What we're trying to do is to address the concern that Commissioner Erickson addressed, as far as these five-acre hobby farms and encroachments on agricultural land, trying to put some strength into the ordinance to preclude that. In the what?
In the egg overlay.
Yeah. Both.
I'm just looking for clarity.
You could add, you could just add, designated prior to the farm and forest land.
Well, then the policy's in the wrong place, isn't it? Since it deals with Chapter 8 issues.
We could add, after, in the conversion of rural farm and forest land, there is some lowland rural forestry that's land designation, and there is an overlay in the rural zone, an egg overlay. And these are all areas that need to be conserved. So we could say that that is indeed in the rural area.
That's one way to address it. Insert the word rural there?
Yes, yes, because they are open spaces, maybe not the right way to describe it, but they are land that is on the tax rolls as rural and as lowland forestry, and they're getting a tax benefit, and the people are using them that way. And it would be heck to be giving somebody a big tax break, because they're using it as agriculture, when they're just holding it to develop. But in the meantime, the resource needs to be preserved everywhere, because we're not doing a good job of preserving it in the egg zone either.
But aren't you put in a position of discouraging a permitted use?
It depends what permitted use you're discouraging. If you want to discourage the permitted use of agriculture or of lowland forestry, go ahead. If you want to, the man has the choice. But the object here is to allow that, to allow the public to have the benefit of a tax base that pays them more than a house would, which costs the taxpayers money, to have an open space that costs the taxpayers less money than residential.
But you're inserting an economic argument that that probably should be placed somewhere else.
Yeah, but no more different than the argument you made. What we are here is about preserving egg land and rural resource and forestry.
Well, the reason for the rural zone is to allow a diversity of uses.
There's a rural overlay of the egg zone, and...
I understand that.
Okay, so it is in there now. And diversity of use is true. But do you want to sacrifice everything, then get rid of the resource lands? It sounds like it.
We're not talking about resource land, we're talking about rural land.
We're talking about resource lands inside of rural lands. We're talking about 20-acre parcels, we're talking about, it's in there now.
Well, I support the motion just the same.
So what are we doing here?
Do you want to restate the motion?
Restate the motion.
Okay. I move that the verbiage be changed as follows. Minimize potential conflicts of rural residential development near designated natural resource lands to prevent adverse impacts on resource land uses, period. And strike the rest.
Is there a second?
There was.
There was a second? Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Does anyone have any other comments related to public hearing comments? Commissioner Hunkup?
Just a clarification there on, I got kind of lengthy here, see if I didn't lose my page. On the areas designated as rural communities, just to make, to add... Which page are you on? Page 14, the bottom of page 14. So the last statement there, areas designated as rural communities, is to add the Birch Bay hyphen Linden and Valley View to that list, which is a, proposed as a type 1 lammard, which would be a rural community.
And we plan to address that as a Scrivener's error, if nothing else, because it was an oversight. The map has been added. It's, it would be a designated type 1 lammard under this April 12 proposal, but the name just didn't get put in the list there.
So, hang on. So Valley View would be designated as a type 1 lammard?
The Birch Bay, Linden, Valley View, proposed lammard, that is proposed as a type 1. That's the one at the northeast corner of, yeah.
Northeast, east of I-5.
Right. Theater. Yeah, it's already proposed as a type 1 lammard, it's just got missed in the written statements.
Any other comments?
So that's my motion. Do we have a second, or do we need it?
I'll second it. Won't hurt.
I thought he was just going to do it as a Scrivener's. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Any other comments to public hearing comments?
Any other comments to public hearing comments? Do we have any other motions for changes, deletions or additions?
Do we need to, do we need to move again on the motion or the ones that we had done previously? The straw votes? We've never done a formal vote on those, those other changes that we made.
We're going to vote on the policies and then separately on the maps, and that'll be a roll call vote.
But I mean, there were some small changes that we made. Do we have to vote on those again?
No.
We don't?
No.
I understand it would probably be a vote subject to those changes that I mentioned earlier in the public hearing, plus the ones we had just made the last couple minutes.
Last call? Okay, is there a motion to accept the policies as changed?
So move, I move that we accept the policies as changed.
I'll second that.
All in favor of the motion?
Any discussion?
Oh.
Discussion?
Discussion, sorry. Commissioner Hahncoop?
It is, I agree with a lot of the statements that were made today about not being able to look at the zoning as well, and there's been a lot of work and so on and so forth. But I think it is a step in the right direction. I mean, there has been a tremendous amount of work that's gone into this over the last several years. It isn't perfect, but it is a step in the right direction and, or a step forward, I should say. And it may very well and probably will be challenged, but at least this is a starting point to continue down that path. So I'm going to support the changes that have been made.
Anyone else?
I don't think it's a step forward, I think it's a step back and I'm not going to support it.
Blile?
I agree with everything Gary said, except that it is a step back for the people of Watcomb County. And I think it's also a tax shift to the people of Watcomb County from very few landowners. And for that, that's a travesty.
Commissioner Tigrove?
I'm going to support this because I know a lot of people have said that they were not listened to. And I remember back in 2009, this room was right full of people who said that they were not being listened to. And so I think this is a step in the right direction and I will support it.
Anyone else? Okay. Blile?
No.
Erickson?
Yes.
Hahncoop?
Yes.
Lasso?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Tigrove?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Uncles?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion about accepting the maps?
All the maps.
That's true, all the maps.
Subject to the one change that was discussed earlier?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we accept the maps as amended this afternoon.
On the rural?
On the rural.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay. Blile?
No.
Erickson?
Yes.
Hahncoop?
Yes.
Lasso?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Tigrove?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Uncles?
Yes.
We adjourned.
We'll see everybody on Thursday.
That's right.
Maybe tomorrow too. That one shouldn't be too bad.